I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. We've got a lot of things on the agenda.
That's fine.
And there's another meeting right, you know, or after ours. So we want to make sure we have time to cover everything. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to do the pledge of allegiance to start. So.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Can we have a roll call? Dawn, you want to do the roll call? John Shams?
Here.
I'm not used to doing this because I don't usually like to do it. Jane? Here. Lisa Schofield?
Here.
Okay. Patty?
Tomzak? Tomzak? Here. It's a hard name to pronounce, I know.
Janet Vance. And I'm going to leave Patty.
Murdoch.
Murdoch. You know, this will circle her. Okay. Okay. Are there any public comments on the agenda? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a question first.
Yes.
Why are the resignations, to accept resignations, on the agenda?
They are.
Why?
Item six.
Why? Well, it's not necessary. I just wonder.
Oh.
Because it's a township, is the supervisor function.
It's in our bylaws that there are vacancies. And I believe election law says that they have to submit an written writing and have to be accepted.
This is not an elected position, it's appointed position. So election law does not apply here.
That's right, you're right.
But on the other hand, on your bylaws, it said all they have to do is submit a letter to the board, and that's all the requirements, is what I'm saying.
We would just like to acknowledge, we have two long-term members of the planning commission, and we just wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their services.
Good enough. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I think so.
Second? Okay.
Put the second who may.
All right. In the packet of information I sent out to the members, it included the June 20th board minutes, and I believe you have copies of them printed out here. So have you had a chance to take a look at them? Does anybody have any questions on the minutes from our last meeting?
I have some on the board comments.
Okay.
Second page.
Pardon?
On the second page, it's kind of confusing. The second sentence, it says, but the Bob Kramer. I think he's Ohio State, take the "the" off "T-A-G."
Okay.
And then the way I read it, it should say something like, has some ideas on solutions for STRs.
Okay.
And then Denise Klein drafted with residence. Is that residence here, or is that residence elsewhere? It should be defined.
You have this, okay, so "the" before Bob Kramer in the board comments.
Yeah, and "s" after "I-U."
All right. I gave mine away. I did.
Just to clarify, Denise Klein didn't put a lot of residence, but she meant with some.
I gave my minutes away because Lisa didn't have a copy, so give that up.
Do you want to borrow mine?
Take mine.
Or borrow yours.
Then I have to give them back.
Here, take my mark.
Oh, okay, that one good.
Okay, that's better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You didn't have to.
All right. Any other changes or comments to the minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Um.
Okay. A second?
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, a second. I'll approve.
All right.
Okay. So item six is, I guess I can strike "accept resignations," but I would like to acknowledge that long-term Chair Mike Chervany and Kelly Asher have resigned. And, you know, they have a lot of contributions to not only the master plan we're working on currently, but the past master plans and work at the CIP particularly. So I'd like to thank them for their service, and we will miss them. So with that said, I would like to introduce the new planning commission members and welcome them to the commission. And it would be Patty Tomzak.
Tomzak, yes.
Tomzak.
And here's Patty Murdoch as we speak.
Patty Murdoch as we speak.
Right. The inspector was circled at 1:30 in showtime news.
Patty, Patty?
Patty.
She's got you down there.
Oh, goodness gracious. Okay. She was just introducing you, it's a perfect timing.
Oh, wow, okay.
And here comes Patty Murdoch. Right.
It happens when you run their business like you're running them, it happens. She's introducing.
Yeah, yeah. So as I said, we were just on item six of the agenda, Patty. All right, thank you. And accepting or acknowledging the resignations of Mike Chervany and Kelly Asher. And then I was introducing the new members. Patty and Patty. So if either of you would like to introduce yourselves or...
I'll go first.
My name is Patty Bane Tomzak. I'm from downstate in Freeland between Saginaw and Midland. I'm now living here about three years. I've had my cottage here for about 25 years, and I was very happy to move here. I've been involved in a lot of boards and a lot of things downstate, and I feel that this is a good opportunity for me to come in and give maybe a fresh eyes and a new perspective. And I'm excited to work with the planning commission.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Patty Murdoch. I have been up here the last five years full-time, but we've had a place a little late for about 36 years. So, and I, with my husband, own Hal Marine, so right around the corner here. I started my career in planning. My degree's in urban and regional planning, and I worked for the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments for two and a half years before I went to work at Procter. So I retired from Procter and started some consulting and retired from that, when my husband convinced me to become, retire from a good-paying job to become an unpaid intern at a marina. It was really funny, the first year. It's not as funny five years in. So, but I've been involved in a lot of community activities, and so I'm looking forward to doing this. It'll be fun.
Okay. And then Janet Vance needs no introduction, but this is her first meeting as the ex-official member of the planning commission.
Exactly. Thank you for having us, thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, with the resignation of Mike Chervany, who is our chair, our bylaws indicate that the vice chair assumes that position until the next officers are elected. We elected officers last September 6th, I believe it was.
I think it was towards the end of September.
Towards the end of September. So we would like to, at this meeting now, nominate and elect new officers that would be effective in September. The reason we're doing that now is because we don't have another regular meeting scheduled until the 26th of October. Now, it's likely, but not guaranteed, that we will have a special meeting, because if we get additional chapters into review of the master plan update from NEMCOG, then we will call a special meeting to review and go over those chapters. So, but it's, since our next regular meeting is not until October, we thought it best that we do that at this meeting.
So we have four meetings scheduled meeting here.
Yeah.
And so this would be a regular meeting in then October, and then I think January would be the next one, which we haven't scheduled yet.
I have a question. Do we have a regular time, like, and date that we like the fourth Thursday of the month type thing?
It says the third Tuesday.
You know, I don't remember how.
It's what I read last night, it said the third Tuesday. Okay. It's, I think it's actually in the bylaws. I think it is. Yep. So we scheduled them a year in advance, like, in January, or, well, the October meeting we'll set the schedule for the next year.
Okay. Oh, it says the fourth Thursday of the month unless determined by the planning commission.
Right. And that's why October 26th is our next regular meeting.
Perfect.
All right. Okay. So we have positions, we have the chair, vice chair, and a secretary positions, and so, are there any motions for?
I'm going to make a motion to have Jane, since she's the long-timer here, and she's going to be the long-timer, be the chairperson. She's doing it now, but she's been the vice chair for the last year, and that's the natural progression usually is, the vice chair moves on to the chair. So I'll make that motion.
Nice second.
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion for vice chair?
Dawn?
Okay.
Who's interested?
I'm too new. I'm too new.
What about Dawn? Yeah, Dawn. Would be...
Okay. You're nominating Dawn for vice chair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion?
Only that she'll be off the commission in spring, right?
Well, maybe.
Well, I mean, as far as...
We have the opportunity to re-up, yeah.
When your term is up, you have to reapply.
When is her?
Not till February.
February 2024.
Yeah.
So she'll have to reapply if she chooses, or just short-term.
Right.
That's on the...
Okay. Any other discussion?
Okay.
Then we can take a vote on that? Dawn, vice chair? Aye?
Aye.
Everybody? Okay. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Now the one that does all the work. We need a nomination for the secretary. Well, I'll nominate Patty Tomzak.
I'm going to refuse. I really am not in a position at this time. I have too many other things on my plate, so I do not have the time for that. Thank you, though, for that vote of confidence.
Any other nominations?
Okay, Lisa, what do you have?
Nope.
Oh, come on.
All right.
You could re-up.
All right. I will nominate John Shams.
This is my last meeting.
Pardon?
This is my last meeting.
This is your last meeting?
Yeah. Because I'm done at the end of August.
Are you going to re-up?
I'm done at the end of August.
Well, you're actually done September 6th as well.
Yeah. And I have a meeting until October.
Just be that.
Well, there's not many people left.
I know. I can't, and I'm too new anyway.
Patty? Somebody has to be the secretary.
Yeah, I'm too new also, I wouldn't...
Well, I will nominate Patty Murdoch for secretary.
Okay. All right. It's not, I mean, it's work, but it's not, we end up sharing...
I don't know the whole way it all works at the moment is the only tough part, so I feel badly about that.
Well, you have a couple of months to, you have a couple of months to...
We don't have a meeting until October, so you're...
Okay, all right.
So you're good, I got you covered.
So somebody's doing the notes from today?
Yes.
Okay, good.
No, none of this takes effect until September, until September.
Oh, until September.
Because you're, when you're nominated for an office, for an officer's position, it's 12 months.
Okay, so you've got to have some overlap with whoever else is doing it.
Well, yeah, I mean, somebody's not, I'm not going anywhere, you know, so I will help you with what needs to be done. Pretty much, it's taking care of the minutes and just disseminating the...
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Since there was no one else, it was a draft, it was basic.
I think that's how I ended up vice chair.
Yeah, it's usually the way it happens on volunteer stuff.
All right. So any opposed? I'll take a vote?
All in favor, yeah.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay.
Don't want to oppose? Shouldn't somebody oppose?
Okay. Okay, so that takes us on to item number nine, to review and approve the bylaws. We had our bylaws amended, when was it, last September?
Well, it's on, so you have a copy, everybody should have a copy of the bylaws.
No.
And the amendment date, the last amendment date was June 20th. We discussed and made the amendment, and the amendment was section, had to do with the CIP. It was changing the CIP language, which is on, where is it?
It's page 3F.
Yep, 3F. And basically, we just copied and pasted from the law. It says, it gives the, it gives the township board the opportunity, should they decide to designate it to somebody else, or if we, it gets to be too much for the volunteers, we can hire somebody to do the CIP. It depends on what the board decides they want. So basically, it's a cut and paste from the law, that we're responsible for it unless the board says we're not responsible for it.
The board already made the appointment, the decision by motion to have that done. So I think saying that it could be someone else is not appropriate.
But they could always, in future years, they could always decide to have somebody else numparked or it, or somebody else do it.
In future years, you could amend your bylaws as well. But it gives a, it, what this, when I read this from clean eyes, okay, that it looks like that it's ambiguous of whether the planning commission is going to be in charge of the CIP or not. And it just, it's just, I think it's ambiguous. And it looks like, too, that, and this is no reflection on anybody, I'm just, you know, with clean eyes, I'm looking at different. And it just says, the planning commission may be exempted from preparing a capital improvement plan, but the township has to decide that. But this make it sound like the planning commission can decide that. And bylaws for future planning commissions, you know, they may read it that way. And so that's what I'm saying, it's a little ambiguous on the language.
I disagree with that, and the reason is because the very first sentence, it says, to further the desirable future development of township under the master plan, the township board under, after the master plan is adopted, shall prepare or cause to be prepared by the township planning commission, or by designated non-elected administrative officials a capital improvements program. So we have to, unless somebody designates someone else, we have to. I mean, that's, that's the law.
I think that last sentence is very misleading as a new person with new eyes. And I went and I printed out the law, and I think that some of the verbiage has been changed a little bit, maybe to make it easier to read. But I do have a copy of that, and my recommendation is to insert the exact verbiage of the law itself as it reads, instead of maybe reworking it, because a lot of work obviously goes into preparing these laws. And there are a few things that are different, and that last sentence, I feel, is misleading. Where if you read the law itself, it's really cut and dry, to me.
How has it been done in the past? How has it typically been done? Just because I'm new.
They never did it.
This is the first year we've done it.
Okay, all right. So it's new. Okay, so it hasn't been done before, okay, it's new.
So which section are we in?
I'm on section F, or...
Sorry, we have a law for section...
There you go. I went on and printed that law out last night.
Yeah, so it says, shall annually prepare...
I understand, but a lot of the verbiage was changed, and the last sentence is not on that law, and I think the last sentence on this bylaw document seems to me to be misleading.
So you want section one and two?
I think if you're going to take part of the law and put it into your bylaws, why not take the whole thing and just insert it as it reads, the law itself? That's just, I'm asking, that's my opinion from new eyes reading it last night.
Okay.
It's, it's my suggestion, because that last, that last sentence leaves room for interpretation.
We, I mean, we can insert the whole law. So you want both one and two? You want all of this?
I think the law as it is, it really isn't any longer than what is here. That's my suggestion.
Probably just cut it off after, where does it end here?
But the, the planning commission, the last line, the planning commission may be exempted from preparing a capital improvements plan, is not stated that way on the law.
So this is, this is my thing, if you got the committee to help you with the CIP, this board, this commission would still be responsible for whatever the committee advised you, and then you would go ahead and advise the township board. So you'd still be responsible. So it's not like you'd be exempt from it if you got a committee to help you. That's just an advisory committee to you. You'd still be responsible for submitting that to the township board. So it says on the bottom of that law, it says consequently, each agency or department of the local unit of government with authority for public structure or improvements shall, upon request, furnish the planning commission with lists, plans, and estimates of the time and cost of those public structures and improvements. So consequently, we're responsible for the CIP.
Could you put in there, just as a reference to the law, without rewriting the law into there?
I mean, I suppose you could, just say...
Per state.
I mean, we try, and we tried to shorten it to say the same thing. Basically, this, all this says is that we're responsible, unless the township board says we're not responsible. That's all this says, and that's what this says, and that's what we said the first time, but we can't see...
But since we have the policy and made the motion and the resolution to accept that, the township board has already decided. I think having this exemption part is misleading, that's what I'm thinking, because it's already been assigned to the planning commission. So just, it is what it is.
So in the future, I'm just thinking about different timeframe than right now, could the planning commission, I'm trying to read this and figure it out, too, could the planning commission decide a third-party delegate was going to do it, or would that have to go back to the board?
I think that has to go through the board.
Yeah, okay, I was just trying to figure that out.
The board is not...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, a third-party delegate could be an advisory committee to yourself, and that's fine, too. I mean, bigger entities, bigger municipalities have subcommittees that help them with advice and counsel, but that would still come back to you, and then that would go to the township board.
The way on our own, don't decide that we're going to go to an outside source, board.
The board, yeah, that could be our recommendation to the board. They would have to agree to it. Then we'd go to a third party, then we'd have to come back to the planning commission. We would bless it before it went to the board. Yeah.
I just want to make sure. You don't have the authority to contract, the planning commission doesn't have the authority to contract with anybody.
Yeah, because there's money to be set there.
But you have authority to appoint a subcommittee of citizens to help you, with any pay to that, and that happens all the time in larger municipalities. But I'm just saying, because we already have the rule that the planning commission is in charge of the CIP, all this exempt stuff is just, what? That's what I'm saying. Just, well, just in case something happens in the future, just in case, we got that covered. It's like, just say what it is, we're in charge of it.
Look, the only problem I have is the last sentence, because I think it's a little misleading. It says, may be exempted from preparing a capital improvements plan. I understand where you're coming from, but I think that it leaves room to be misinterpreted, in my opinion. And yes, I'm a detailed person with words, so I know I'm probably, I'm not trying to nitpick, but I think it's important to have the verbiage in your bylaws accurate, and so everyone understands what the intent is behind.
So going back to my original suggestion, just put in there accordance with state statute XXX.
On section, such a day. First thing gets changed.
Well, no, no, just...
The X, so it's the MCL number.
Because they'll change it, we won't have to go back to our bylaws.
Yeah, you're right. We could do just that, we could just cite the MCL number.
Yeah.
25.3865.
Yep. No more.
Is there a section number there? And then you don't have to type words.
Yep. In accordance to 125...
Section 65.
125.3865, section 65, one.
And three, it was 125, three what?
3865. And section 65. Yep.
So that replaces all of F? Do I understand that correctly?
Yep.
I should make sure.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, I'm fine with that, too.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dawn?
Amend the bylaws such that section...
121...
Section 3F references state statute XXXX, whatever that turned out to be.
125.3865, section 65.
Right. Nothing more, nothing less.
I will second that.
So all I'm going to do is I'm going to take all this out, just so I'm clear, I'm going to take all of this out, and I'm going to say, where it says capital improvement, capital improvements program, I'm going to say, reference MCL 125 dot 3865, section 65, and that's it.
Perfect.
No, don't say reference, that says you don't have to. Say, prepare a capital improvements program accordance...
In accordance with...
In accordance with that statute.
That's much better.
That makes a difference, you can argue with that.
In accordance. Good suggestion. That's the engineer.
Okay. Is there, I guess we should have had a second to your motion before we just...
I seconded it.
Oh, you did. Okay. Is there any more discussion on the bylaws?
Yes, I've got a question. On, on section 2E, agenda, do you have any way of having anything put on the agenda by board members other than the chairperson, or do you have to be the only authority on this agenda? I'm just asking.
I'm not sure how, is there anything in the bylaws that address that? I don't think so.
It's in the bylaws.
She's talking about the bylaws.
I am talking about the bylaws.
You're talking, oh, you're talking about the agenda.
The agenda, like, okay, on our township board, any one member can request to put something on there, and it gets put on there. I mean, that's the point.
So you're asking about putting an agenda on the planning commission's meeting agenda?
Has to go through our...
That have, have the ability for each member to say, I'd like to talk about this or that.
To submit an agenda.
To submit...
Add an item to the agenda?
Yes.
So it just says, the chair, the chairperson shall be responsible for preparing a tentative agenda for planning commission meetings. The agenda may be modified by the action of the commission. So that's us in here, if we come in and say we want to add something, or you want to email or add something, you can.
Right. Okay. That's what I asked.
And then, of course, there's always board comments at the end.
Right. Okay. Another thing about the conflict of interest is everybody sign their conflict of interest statement, because that has to be in by Monday.[1650.62]
So that's us in here. We come in and say we want to add something, or you want to email or add something.
Right.
You can.
Okay, okay. That's what I asked.
And then, of course, there's always board comments at the end.
Right.
Yeah.
Another thing about the conflict of interest is everybody sign their conflict of interest statement, because that has to be in by Monday.
I signed one.
Yeah.
I think we're going to address that on the agenda in the board comments, and we'll cover that later, Janet.
But it's in the bylaws, right?
Nope.
Well, they have a conflict of interest...
It does refer to the conflict of interest. You have to declare if you have a conflict of interest. There is no form.
And that's what the conflict of interest statement is, is declaring it in advance if there is a conflict of interest on one thing or two things, zero things or whatever.
There is additional things on there, and I think it's, I think we can address it during board comments.
Then if it's addressed during board comments, then there's no discussion, and it's just a comment, right?
Okay, look at it. I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
What you're really saying there, though, is anybody has a conflict of interest, they need to call it out and not go on that security issue.
I think that's a given on every commission and all. If there's a conflict of interest, you declare it.
You declare it, and then you remove yourself from voting on that particular item.
That's based on, that's in the law.
So you said that the forms have to be filled out by Monday by everyone? Is that a law?
Everybody on the commission. That's a policy of the township.
Policy of the township board? Okay.
And we serve at your pleasure over time.
Gotcha. Okay. That's good, just asking.
So do you sign it even to declare you have no?
Yeah, you can say you have no.
Okay, all right.
I put zero on mine, unless they...
Do you have to fill that out every year, that statement?
Yes.
You have to be signing dated every year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just a public challenge.
Understand, thank you.
Okay. So are there any other issues regarding the bylaws? There was a motion and a second and discussion, so let's take a vote. Everybody in favor of the amendments or the bylaws as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, item 10 on the agenda is the annual report. One of the things in the Enabling Act requires the planning commission to do an annual report. Basically, it's a report. It can be, you know, I've looked at annual reports from other township planning commissions, and some of them do, you know, an encyclopedia of things. Some of them is a straight thing. Here's what our meetings, here's what we did. So we need to think about how we're going to do that. It needs to be done before our next meeting, so we will do the annual report.
Actually, we'll do it at the end of June, so we're kind of a month late already, because it's supposed to be submitted by the end of the fiscal year. But that's okay. I can go to the board and explain the CIP and the turnover in the board and all that, and just say, you know, if it's over by September 11th.
What is the fiscal year on?
The fiscal year ends June 30.
June 30.
The issue is with doing it with the fiscal year is that we have to make a decision on what we want in the annual report. If you want to know what bills have been paid, anything that, the fiscal year, even though it ends, the books are not closed until, I think it was September 1st is when the books close. So anything that's coming through for billing, we would have to include that.
It's not necessarily about that, though. A planning commission shall make an annual written report to the legislative body concerning its operations and the status of the planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body related to planning and development. So all it is is an update. It's not about all that.
Do we have a pass copy?
No, we've never had a...
And it is a requirement.
There's never been an annual report?
No. And, you know, to be honest, part of the reason that some of this is missing is because we still do not have an ordinance adopting Act 33. That's pending the board. The old law didn't have a lot of these requirements, so we were formed under a previous law. We're supposed to be behaving under the current law, but we're also supposed to have an ordinance, and we found that we missed that step. That happened back in 2008 and '09, so that never...
So it'd be our first one.
So the goal moving forward is to do an annual report by the end of the fiscal year?
Yep.
Which is basically an update of what you're accomplishing as a commission.
And one of the things, we're in the middle of updating the master plan, so a lot of what you might want to report and talk about in the annual report has to do with the master plan. So that, besides the master plan and the CIP, those are the main purposes of this planning commission. So it would make more sense to have a more comprehensive annual report if we could include, you know, the status of our master plan.
So when do you think you have this ready? That's what I'm just asking. When would be a good timeframe? Because I can go to the board and explain to them that this is all new, and that, you know, it's not going to be here until June 30, of course.
We don't have an up there, a firm schedule when we're going to get the chapters for the master plan that we're missing from NEMCOG. And I think once we have those, and then after we have those and reviewed, then the master plan goes out for public hearings. It goes out to all of the surrounding townships, goes to the county, and all of that for comments and approvals, or I don't know if they had to approve. But anyway, so I think once we are at that stage where we're having that, we, as a planning commission, have completed the master plan, pending changes or things that would come back from the public comments or from the other things, the public meetings. So I think that we should at least wait until we've gotten all of the chapters for the master plan that we have looked at and reviewed, and then we can update an annual report.
How long is that process going to be, do you think, to get to that?
We don't have a date certain from NEMCOG when we're going to get the rest of them.
Just a guesstimate. I mean, how long do you think that process is going to be?
Another year.
I was just going to say, guys, we can just write up a simple annual report that we're working on those days.
Well, we've got a couple of templates.
I don't think we have to have it finished.
You don't have to have your master plan done to do an annual report.
There's, we found a couple of templates that we can use for that.
We can do that, but it would not be complete.
Well, but a lot of times they aren't. They're in progress.
Right.
You know, so you're saying where you're at currently, and we don't know what our deadlines are for our master plan, but this is what we're currently doing. And you can do that once a year and have it done by the end of the fiscal year, and it's basically an update.
Are there any specific requirements as to what has to be in the annual report?
Yes, there are.
So that's what we're...
Okay, so what are those?
What are the requirements?
It has to, you have to have the roll call, what, how many meetings each person has attended. That is called out in the, it's also called out.
Is there a way to get a copy of what that is? It's in the law.
I sent copies of both of the laws to you guys.
I didn't get through everything, though.
The Planning and Enabling Act and the others, it calls out what the planning, what the annual report needs.
So that's basically our final. That's how we have to operate.
Yeah, yeah.
But I agree with you.
So is that the Michigan one?
It can be done.
Is that the Michigan planning, since I haven't gotten the...
Yes.
And since I am the secretary, you'll be expecting me to drag something. I want to know where that is. So Michigan Planning and Enabling Act is in there that it says what we've got to have?
Yes.
Okay, so I can, like, make sure I go through that and figure that out. And those... And we just have, we should just have headings and updates and... Right, those are both, it can be very simple. Some of the ones I looked at, they're very simple. Here's what we did, here was the...
Right.
It can be something as simple as putting, as stapling together every month, we have to submit our consent agenda report.
Your...
All the information is on that report.
Is there any...
And then you could just make it a concise update on top of it.
You could just staple, I mean, if you wanted one today, that's what I would do. Staple them together and hand them. That's where I would start.
In the law, is there a...
I mean, you can have subcommittees that generate the annual report.
Fiscal year.
I mean, but I mean, so it's not just you doing it by yourself, is what I mean.
Yeah.
We're too late for this year, so let's do it eventually.
We always have, even at the monthly, before the package started.
The old one didn't have that, the new planning and enabling act.
Somebody at the...
We don't have the order.
Somebody's always here, and the meeting would speak. So it's not like...
That's what I remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's easy to do the next...
Okay. Well, we can put something together and, in the next non-site.
We've already started looking at it.
Okay, Dawn has started on it. We will put a draft together and send it, email it around to the board, and...
So can we give a tentative date of when that annual report would be completed by?
I would say by the, maybe we can do that by the end of August.
Okay. So that, Janet, you could take that to the board and let them know that it's being worked on, and this is our tentative deadline.
That'd be great, and I think they would appreciate an update of that timeline, so I think...
Is reasonable?
Hmm.
Okay. Perfect.
Any more discussion on the annual report? Okay, item 11 on the agenda is the master plan status and schedule, and we did get an update on that from NEMCOG, and they have sent chapter 5 that we have not received. I sent that to everybody to review. And chapter 5 is basically stating what the current land use is in the map. And we need to make sure that that's accurate, because the next chapter that they're working on, it takes a lot more work, is future land use and future land master plans. So that map will be, you know, more critical. So we want to make sure that what we're starting out with is accurate, and then the changes would be applied to that, would come in the other one. So have, has everybody looked at chapter 5? Do you want to, I can burn it up, we can go through it, paragraph by paragraph. It's not very long. I think there's like four, four pages?
Yeah.
Sixty-nine. And it just outlines how the land is currently used, right?
Right.
Exactly. So is, how do we verify that? They verify that on our page?
They do.
They did that on our behalf? Okay, just wondering.
All you can do is look for something obvious.
Some of this comes from the county, so...
The county.
So NEMCOG that's doing this, they are the regional planning?
Yeah.
So you mentioned in Ohio, you have, okay, so they are the regional planning. They do all the, they involve the regional. And then we have county planning.
Right.
And then we have the local, yes, our township, yeah, planning. We don't do zoning here. We're advisory to...
Yeah, we can make a request or something, but it's not our...
And we'll work with them on, which we'll get into a little bit more of, I think, one of these things.
Yeah.
The handout that I gave you guys with the map for...
Yeah, yeah.
That is, that is something we worked with the county on years ago.
Where did mine go? Do you want to borrow mine?
So to set up the, to set up the village center, the village center overlay, basically what I did is I attached out of the zoning, the zoning, what each one, there's a section for each one, what they, yep.
What they call them.
What they call them, and what is, what changes we made. Otherwise, if we don't do this, if we decide we're not having a planning commission, it reverts back to the county, you have no local control.
Right, we can only go as a citizen.
Yeah. So this was something that we worked with the county on to change the zoning, so that we had some flexibility with certain things, like what can be allowed in the village center overlay, what can be allowed in the village center, parking requirements, because if we went by the county rules, they have pretty strict parking requirements. We wanted the flexibility, because we do have on-street parking, to be able to make changes to that requirement. So those kinds of things. If we don't do this, again, like if it reverts back to them, we have next level.
One thing I noticed in the, where it talks about the vacant land, what's owned by the state of Michigan, and then it has a local government. And this is land classified under local government land use, also land owned by Tusker Township, the airport, the library, and then it says in the Chamber of Commerce, as well as properties owned by the road commission and local government. 2.26% of the land used in Tusker Township. I'm not sure, is the Chamber of Commerce considered local government?
No.
And I'm not sure what their status is right now and how it would reflect this thing.
We have no, we have no interest in the chamber. They're their own entity. They own their own buildings, their own property, so that, you know...
So we should have... I just sent something right before the meeting.
Yeah, that doesn't agree with what's on the county records.
Yeah, so do we own the property underneath it, and they built the building? Is that, I was trying to figure that out myself.
No, I don't know that that's true, John, because somebody has to sit down, and I know you found the deeds.
Yeah.
Somebody has to sit down and draw them out, because the language is a different question.
If there are intentions within the deeds giving authority to somebody else to do something, which would be unusual.
Yeah, but it's not, it doesn't appear to be the whole, the whole entire thing. We don't know. I mean, we don't know.
You can only go by what the land holding nation is at the county level without getting the full...
I believe, and this was back when the sewers went through, when I was on the board, there was some question with the bathrooms, when the bathrooms were built. So we're not sure if the whole property there was the chamber, and then they deed it over the part where the public restrooms are. But I also understand that underneath the building itself is where the water well is for the restrooms. So how all of that works, I'm not sure. But it was under, a lot of people thought, or it was donated to the chamber, and there are deed restrictions, that if they were to vacate, it would go back to...
If it's offered for sale.
If it's offered for sale. It would go back to the original owners that donated it, or their heirs.
1987 was the original donation, and 2012 is when the chamber reassigned it or trickly sold it for nothing back to the township.
So there is a lot of obviously questions.
Between 2012 is the last thing I could find on it.
In 2012, what happened? I'm sorry.
The chamber sold it back to the township.
Well, it was a quitclaim, Janet.
It was a quitclaim, so they quitclaimed it back to the township.
Can usually, it's for dollars.
So they have it up for sale now, so is that a legal thing?
Probably not, if the township owns it, unless the township...
Don't say that.
I will.
Well, don't, because it could be, so what, I just, I said this before.
I don't understand.
If, if the chamber, if it reverts back to the original owners, and the chamber's gone back to the original owners, found their heirs or whatever, and they've made some sort of an agreement, it's a perfectly legitimate sale. We just don't know.
We'd have to pull the deed to find specifically what it says. But as you read the document on the...
Well, I don't even know that we need to, I don't know that we need to get involved.
Oh, we don't?
I think we need to, what we need to do is get with NEMCOG and tell them that the chamber property is up in the air. We don't know that.
That'll be fine, yeah.
And tell them to take that out.
Yeah, because there's legality.
That's what I think.
Yes, because there's legality, so who owns it, they don't really care.
It's for sale. So if that sale goes through, the township doesn't own it anymore. If the township does inadvertently own it, yeah.
Well, I guess that's why you have title insurance, right?
I was going to say, title insurance could find yourself in a situation.
Somebody has to pull the actual deeds from 87.
And those kind of things are not unusual in little towns like this.
No.
But you have to pull the deeds from 87.
Well, you made a good point. You said maybe the real estate agency has already looked into some of those things.
Yeah, maybe we should contact them and just see what the...
See what the legality is.
I actually just think we should just take it out. I think we should ask NEMCOG to take it out.
It's for sale.
It's not our, it's not our privilege to worry about.
It's for sale.
Yeah, it's a thing somewhere.
It's to the board, not to us. So, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah, it's another board issue. We should do some research on that one.
You can, but, so I'm saying for the, for the master plan, I'll request that they take it out. What do you...
I agree.
I agree with them.
Yes.
I don't want to touch that hot potato.
It smells like a hot potato. I don't want to even touch.
Yeah. Not many transitions, Bob.
And the township board, if, apparently they were not involved with the sale, it was on the chamber, but if the township board, the township owns it, then the township board would have to authorize the sale, which hasn't been done.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. We have to be involved somewhere.
So you're open-ended there, right?
But it's still, yeah, but it's still going to be gone, so...
So what we need to do is to research the title search on this, and just see what deed restrictions are.
The board is going to do that, correct?
Yeah.
But we're taking it off our master plan.
Because we could tell less about that.
Do we need a vote on that?
I would say.
No, we just, once we agreed to leave, we just send them...
Once we mark up big changes...
We send it back to...
They go, they make the...
We send it back to NEMCOG, they make the changes.
And then...
And then we get final approval at the end. They'll give us the, all the revisions.
Okay. And who's our person at NEMCOG working with?
Denise Klein and, wasn't it Doug Ball?
No, Nico. I've got three people right now that I haven't been working with. I really, Doug doesn't really get too much involved in that, so he was here just for the one minute. So is there anything else?
Okay, is there anything else in this chapter that is incorrect or needs to be changed or updated? It's pretty straightforward, and like I say, they take it from the actual map, so the critical one will be the next one where the changes are.
That and they, they, they're in direct contact with the county, because they're knowing from county land.
For their zoning maps, right? Okay. Well, I think we can...
Can I ask a question on chapter 6? It's all redlined, things crossed out. Do they have an actual update of the act?
Not yet. We haven't gotten it yet. No.
No, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to, that's going to be the next thing. We're going to have to talk about chapter 6 and a couple of the other chapters that we're going to have to change.
What I would suggest is, when we get the next chapter from them to review, and we put that on the agenda, we also take another look at chapter six that we've already reviewed twice. Because there are a number of references in that. When you look at goals and objectives, that involved the chamber. You know, we said, this would, you know, the, this is a chamber function, this is a chamber goal, so we need to take a look at that.
Well, they've changed, so we have, like, I went back, I had to, um, send, update chapter six and send all of that information back to them. And so, like, there's questions, like, under recreation, um, in chapter six, there were questions, like, question six was promote winter tourism for the area, including snowmobile, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing and ice fishing, and we said, question mark, chamber, the chamber, that's who we designated.
Chamber wouldn't do that.
Well, it's promoting, so usually.
Chamber wouldn't do that. I've been on the Chamber of Commerce in other cities, saw them. A chamber focuses only on the business, it's not a tourism group.
Correct.
There's a tourism group and they're very separate, very different.
So that's what happened here. They put the tourism group and the chamber together, and they were one functioning as one.
I thought they had separated that recently.
And we don't know who's taking what.
Got it. Yeah, I don't know that either, but I just know the chamber is not typically responsible for tourism and promoting an area, except for promoting businesses.
Well, that, that's why we need to take another look.
Yeah.
At the objectives and goals from chapter six.
At the end, you probably have to take a holistic look again, just to make sure nothing's in conflict along the way.
Exactly.
Changes on, you know, from previous chapters.
And frankly, um, chapter six, the goals and objectives, is probably one of the most important, critical chapters of the master plan, so. So we've looked at it twice, and obviously we're gonna have to take another look at it.
There are questions on there.
So we can do that when we get the next chapter, is it seven and eight?
Well, in the meanwhile, I mean, somebody should be asking these questions, so that we can put it, because we have to put.
We can send it to.
There's a timeframe and responsibility, like, who, what the timeframe is and the responsibility, well, they said, it should be ongoing, just ongoing, pretty much everything is ongoing.
Okay.
And, for a timeframe, but the responsibility is, is somebody, so whether it's the, you know, planning commission, the county. Yeah.
One choke to throw.
So we have those questions, we have those specific questions that we, that we put, the chamber listed the chamber as the potential because it fell in.
Yeah, because it was commingled at one time.
Yeah.
It was commingled at one time, okay.
So we need to get an answer to those questions.
Yeah.
Who's gonna, who's gonna follow up?
Or you can leave the questions off, relate to, and that chamber would have to do the next.
Yeah, but that's, you don't wanna do that, though, because that's under your recreation. I mean, the questions were.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, for this area especially.
Or just put TBDs on all of them, if you have to get a done.
Tried not to, like, so the TBDs were the chamber, so, like, promote winter tourism for the area, getting snowmobiling, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, ice fishing. Yeah, and then.
But those are, those aren't, those aren't a board or planning commission task either, so.
It's not a township board function.
No.
It's either, it's either the tourism group or the chamber.
Right.
And for them to pick it up.
Well, and there, I mean, if you look through the master plan, what's required, the requirements that are in there, and what they include in there, they, they include, like, the chamber is included in the list of, what chapter was that?
Communities.
It was the communities, the resources.
Resources, yeah.
And that's where we include the chamber, the visitor bureau, any other community resource that, that is currently exists in the township.
Well, basically, you're not assigning the position to them, you're just saying, if they do it, it's kinda gonna be there for you, because it's not a government function, is what you're saying. And so you could, you could take it off, you, I mean, you could leave it just the way it is, and if they wanna take it up, they do, if they don't, maybe another entity, I don't know, like, buddies might do it, or, you know, whoever, that, you're just stating that it's not a government function, and it's to someone else to pick that up.
So typically, the groups that are included in that are of the nonprofits, like the women's club, like the LPA, the nonprofits who get involved in this, in these kinds of things.
So you could still say the chamber would be responsible for it, if they pick it up, fine, if they don't, we, we can't assign this responsibility to them.
No, we have no authority over that, to tell them or anything.
We're just saying, so that when somebody picks up our master plan and looks at it, and they're reading through it, and they say, you know, who's doing this, we have that point, that contact point in there.
Because I don't think they're, they're going away. I think they're gonna just get rid of their brick and mortar building and go to more online, so they'll still be accessible to publish things about the community and things like that.
But are they changing their focus? In the past, they've been involved in a lot of the stuff.
Well, yeah.
I'm reading their, what I read was they were changing.
I think, I think they're gonna go back to their original function, which is to start businesses.
Promote lever shows, yeah, yeah.
I just don't think they have the resources and staffing to do much of that.
To do much more of that, no. And that's, I think, why they gave up the parade this year, she just couldn't do it, she's overwhelmed, she's, I just can't do it.
The board voted not to do it. Has needed to be re-grouped is the tough part. The last person that was there had some difficulties with the role and alienated some of the businesses, and therefore, and there was a big gap period of time from when they left and a new person came in, and so I think she's just sort of, I think the new chamber director is swimming a string, just trying to get her hands on it all, to be honest. And so.
Okay.
Maybe our own website could do some of that. People look up Indian River Tusker Township or something, they, they go to our website, maybe we can put some little things on about, I think we already have community events happening and things like that. So our website could handle some of that, fishing tournament thing, or this or that, I mean, things are being promoted, the farmer's market's being promoted there, but we don't, it's not a government function, but we're promoting it, so our own website could probably take, is already, and could continue to do stuff like that.
Okay.
So can you take that to the board and discuss that?
Yes.
I think that'd be a great idea, to discuss what the board's willing to do in regard to that.
So it looks like we have kind of moved on to, um, twelve, we've been talking about the chamber and the sale of the chamber. These were issues that I just put on there because some of the things that are going on with the River Street condos and the road abandonment, um, issues with short-term rentals have come up, public comment, I mean, you know, they're areas that affect sections of the, of the master plan. So we just were gonna kind of take a quick look at, not to address and solve any of these issues, but just take a look and see, our cognizant of what's going on with that is how it's gonna affect our master plan update, so.
Well, some of it is, so like, the airport forestry, that issue, in chapter, is it four, the natural resources chapter? In chapter four, there's a map in there that includes all of the forest areas and what types of trees are in there. So you're talking about sixty acres that needs to be pulled out, I don't know what the percent of the forestry is.
Actually, it's seventy-one acres that they're going to be doing selective cut, but we're not changing the kind of trees that are there, we're just promoting new growth, we're not taking out anything but the older growth. So what this is, so let me explain, it's seventy-one acres that's gonna be affected. There's going to be a forty-foot buffer around the private residence that lives there, so those trees will not be touched. The rest of the acreage, any, any oak that's under twelve inches in diameter will be saved, any other tree that's under five inches of diameter will be saved, so it is a selective cut. We're gonna promote the aspen and the conifer at first will, will go, and then the acorns, that we need the acorns to promote new growth and also the wildlife, so that's why they're gonna keep the oak trees twelve inch or under. And they said that the forester that is, has been contracted to do this, is been, has been recommended by Tricia St. Pierre, which is the DNR forester for this area. He was a, he is a retired DNR forester, and, so what he does is he takes the contract and he bids it out, and then he takes a percentage of that contract, and then we get the rest of it, of whatever the tree sales are that's contracted. We expect to have a net of around thirty thousand dollars that will be put in for airport improvements. It will also improve the forest, because right now there's such old growth in that forest, because it's never been taking care of and managed, it's just natural, whatever it is for, I don't know, a century or so, and, and the area is actually starting to die out because the canopy is so thin, the new growth is so weak underneath it, it can't get much bigger than what it is because it's being choked out. So this is going to give oxygen and it's going to give sunlight for the newer growth to come back in, and this is what they call forestry management. It's exactly what is happening with the DNR property that's off of sixty-eight, it's exactly the same kind of thing. So we're not really changing the forest at all, we're, we're promoting more growth, newer growth, and then three to five years, they said you probably won't even notice it, that it's been changed.
Oh, I'm not gonna agree with that, I'm sorry, I haven't.
Excuse me, excuse me, that's what the foresters said, we're not going to have the forty-foot trees, but we're going to have so much new growth so quickly, because there's the small spindly ones, all of a sudden they'll get sunlight and they're gonna blossom. He says probably, for the first couple of years, it's gonna look crap, and he warned us, you know, but if you look around, there's other people that are doing it in their private property as well, and, and they're promoting new growth, this is what has to be done for good forestry management, has to be.
Well, so good forestry management means there's a plan for reforestation, and that's not the case here. The plan for reforestation is you usually go plant saplings, you plant whips, and you keep down the popl trees that are growing up, and that's what happened behind my pole barn. Beth Mangum came and she, it was gonna be a select cut, unfortunately, when you're talking about, and it's the same forest, when you're talking about a select cut like that, usually what happens is when the big trees come down, they knock down the small trees. So what pops up are popl, and that's exactly what I have behind the barn.
And that's your first, that's your first couple of years of growth?
That's five years, and that's all there is.
And then the bigger trees will, will start, they, they're slower growth and they will start.
They're choked.
But, but the prob, the problem is, is this is exactly what's happening with the DNR off of sixty-eight, we're not doing anything different, it's just with a private thing, rather than with the DNRs doing their property, we're doing our property, it's the same exact stuff, this has all been modeled after what's happening at sixty-eight with, with the DNR property there, it's exactly the same.
Either way, you're seventy-one acres, and what I'm, what we're saying is that you're going from a forest to now, um, very few trees left, so we have to, we have to make that adjustment in the map. When you're talking about five inches or smaller and you're taking down big trees, the majority of those will get knocked down, there's not gonna be hardly anything standing. You, you, go look at sixty-eight, what they're doing over there.
I don't, I know, but this is how it's done, this is how it's done, we're not gonna have people going in there and replant trees.
Right.
Well.
We, we can't, we, we cannot, we cannot solve reforestation how it's done.
Do we change the map?
But it's going to change our maps, and that's what we are addressing here. The master plan has maps that show forest, other areas, so what we're saying is when they do redraw the map, we've already shown it on chapter, the resources one, we need to make, we need to make corrections.
What page?
It's on the, it's on the natural resources section, so they are.
Is that chapter four? It's chapter four.
Yeah. And the map is.
I mean, you know, we can, we can discuss all afternoon, the benefits or not the benefits of cutting down the trees or not. I mean, my, my brother worked at the golf course for fifty-some years, and every time he comes to my house, he's, that tree's gonna go, that's gonna go, it, they all go, and I said, no, 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 I like it, and he's, oh, the can, so, it's obviously.
My husband runs around with his chainsaw, cutting down every single popl tree because they come out.
And my birch trees are gone, I didn't want them gone, but anyway, so this, this is not something that we can change or just, or solve here. The idea is, we need to make sure that's reflected correctly on our master plan.
Right.
Correct. Okay?
Correct.
Agreed.
So. Oops.
So what do you put on the map? Mixed hardwoods?
I just, so it's based on, I think they base it on percentages of the, you know, the, like, if you look at the map, they just show the coverage, and then they have the types of forest that's there.
We could talk to NAMCOG and see how they, how their, how they do that.
So for they, if you look at where it is.
Know that this is changing.
If you look at where the, where that is, where the airport is on the map, it's got northern hardwoods and then also lowland conifers, it's pretty wooded.
I would just change, just a mixed hard and softwoods.
Well, they're probably gonna go back to, it, it would turn white, is what it would turn.
Well, we'll, we'll just make a note to them to adjust accordingly.
And that's really what we needed to know, is seventy-one acre, I mean, it's been all over the map, first it was thirty acres, now that it was sixty-three acres, the vibe's on the email, now you're talking seventy-one acres.
And there's a buffer around the edge?
Yeah.
Okay, and how big is the?
Okay.
Forty foot around the private property there.
Okay.
And we're expanding the visual line from a hundred and fifty, from the center, from the center line to a hundred and sixty, and we're making it more visibility for the runway, to make it safer, according to our insurance carry, liability carrier suggestions.
Okay, so that has to be, the other one that we wanna watch is the River Street condos, the road abandonment request, and that's.
There was, um.
That documents, the documents I gave you, we waive, in some cases we'll waive parking if, if we feel there's enough on-street parking available, they start abandoning this, that is gonna have to change, if we start abandoning right away that we're using for on-street parking, because it won't be available, so they won't be able to waive it, or revert back to what it was prior to that ordinance update.
That hasn't happened yet, so we're.
Right, the road commission minutes from their July sixth meeting, manager hall had an update, and according to their minutes, they said that the planning and zoning has been dealing with Mr. Grundy regarding River Street development. Mr. Grundy is in need of additional parking and is looking to get the right of way partially or fully abandoned on River Street. Legal counsel recommends to the road commission, holding public hearing if the request comes through. So I don't know if they've scheduled a public hearing or not, but that was, what was according to their minutes earlier this month.
Hasn't the township board acted on that already, where they made a recommendation to say, whatever the county does, we're okay with?
At, on the, at the June twenty-ninth meeting, the township board passed a resolution basically saying that if the road commission abandons a portion of the right of way, it normally would go back to the township for first right of whatever, and so if that happens, they have already determined that they would waive their right to that in favor of the developer.
Right.
So I guess the status is.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah, but that could, we'll have to, it's, this is a, we need to watch this stuff kind of thing, because if that happens again, that ordinance has to be updated, because we're gonna, if we're gonna start doing that, we shouldn't have that ordinance in place. The county's gonna need to know that we're getting rid of our on-street public parking.
Well, the county has to approve it, right?
Yeah, but they don't, if we're starting to do abandonment of road right-aways, that's used currently for those purposes, the county needs to know we're doing that.
And then would we also have to have this apply to all other applicants if they wanna do, because there are some other roads in this township that are.
Yeah, it's basically all.
Larger, wider.
All right, so I don't have any additional information on that, I guess. Do you wanna say anything about short-term rentals?
It's really a county issue, isn't it? I thought it was.
They have, they have a zoning, they have a zoning ordinance, they do, they do not have anything in there that, other than zoning, that would put regulations on short-term rentals.
But they would have to approve anything, wouldn't they?
No, not, they don't approve our ordinances, so if they, if we did an ordinance, it would not be a zoning ordinance, it would be a police power ordinance, just like our food truck or.
Light ordinances.
Light ordinance, those are all police power ordinances, that we have the, that the township has the authority to enact, and I think that's what Mike Tress was trying to tell everybody was, it's a police power ordinance, the township has the authority.
But we're limited on the police power ordinance. If we decided to do something like that, all we could require is them to register and or be a. or pay a fee. We cannot limit, we cannot expect, we cannot do anything like that.
So the, so the police power ordinance, what, what it would do is similar to what we did with the food truck ordinance. You would say, for example, for number of persons allowed, follow the county health department's rules. Because the county health department does have rules on how many people are allowed to live in your house. It's based on septic use. So there's that whole thing. You would just, you would just put follow the county.
We couldn't limit. We can't limit.
The county already does. So we would reference that.
But we can't.
No, but we wouldn't be. We would say follow the county.
Okay. So there's a lot of limitations of this police power act. And like I said, all we would be able to do is make them register.
Yeah.
And make them pay a fee. If we did that, why?
Well, it would be, we, we give it the food truck is they have to register, they have to provide us with a copy of their sales tab license, they have to provide us with a copy of their health.
We can't, we can't make them do, we can't make short-term rentals do any of that.
I don't know, but I would, I don't, how do you know that?
Because I've done the research on it. I'm not township board and I talked to the attorney about this. All we can do is make them register their property on a list and/or we could make them, if we wanted to, pay a fee. I'm saying, why?
So what are the other townships doing? I mean, there's, there's a ton of short-term ordinances out there.
And they do all, they're self-zoning.
Some of them are, some of them are not.
Our attorney said, we have no authority.
Okay.
So until that happens, this planning commission can't go forward with anything.
The planning commission. We would do anyways.
No.
All we do is, we listen to what people say. And then we make a recommendation to the board. It's same thing with the food truck. We didn't do that on our own.
No, we assigned you that ordinance as a matter of fact, and there was a reason for that.
Because people complained.
No, that was not the reason. It's if, the reason was, is because when the food truck comes in, they, they don't have to pay the brick and mortar cost of a regular restaurant. But yet they're taking business away from our brick and mortar restaurants.
But short-term rentals don't pay and they take away from the brick and mortar hotels and motels that have to pay.
Or resorts.
You know, fees that short-term rentals don't. So it's kind of a, you know, if you're going to.
But they're paying taxes. They're paying property taxes on that.
But they don't have to pay any of the other taxes. So there's other taxes that are.
There's hotel taxes and there's a tourism tax.
We don't have a tourism tax anymore because we don't have a tourism.
But there's also.
We used to.
But also I know that the small resorts, the additional taxes they have to pay, the resorts do, like Cindy Fisher, for example. So there are other taxes that are associated with, with that.
And there would be a sales and use tax too.
Yep.
And that's up to that, that property owner, manager to file that tax.
The, the thing is, there are a lot of ordinances that are already in place. Noise ordinance, blade ordinances that can be done. But there are, there are issues that have come up for the last two years at board meetings, at annual meetings, at planning commission, DDA, where there are, you know, our residents that are asking for some assistance. And they're not asking for short-term rentals to go away. That's not going to happen. I mean, they're all, there've been short-term rentals forever, but, but it's expanding and it's starting to have an impact. So it's, we can't just bury our heads in the sand and say.
What is the impact though? That's what I want to know. What is the impact? What are you hearing? I know what I'm hearing. I want to know what's being brought to you because you're saying it has an impact on the surrounding.
It has an impact on their quality of life, being able to enjoy their private residence.
Because of like noise or parking, is that what it's?
It's noise. I, I can tell you what it's like in my, I don't have an issue with my next door neighbor that has a short-term rental. She lives there. It's quiet. We don't have a problem. You go down to the other end of the road, they have problems because of the parking, the lack of parking, the number of people that are in there, fires that are not being put out before people go to bed. There's all, there's, they have a whole list. They've been in here and complained.
So are they, are they making a complaint with our township police? Because I mean, that would be the first thing that we could actually, you know, have documentation. We could have data. I mean, if they don't see the problem enough to call the police and say, hey, look, he's blocking my driveway, then why should we step in if they won't take care of the situation themselves? This, you know, sometimes you have to, you know.
Well, I'll tell you, the one time that I did have an issue with a guy that's two doors the other way, I had to call the police. I had to have them come out because they tied their boat up out front and they, it was a rental pontoon. They didn't know what they were doing. They didn't leave enough line out and it started to get rough and that boat was marching two foot at a time towards my dock and my boat. And I didn't know whose it was. I went and knocked on doors and then I thought, what the hell am I knocking on a stranger's door for that might show up with a gun to shoot me? It's at midnight. It's midnight. So I had to call the police. And then what ensued after that, once we figured out, they got the people two doors down to come out to take care of it, they were just going to move it back over. And I said, you can't do that on this side of the lake. Everybody knows you can't tie up on this side of the lake.
Right.
And they, and I said, so I asked the police officers, can they just take it down to the green decks and tie their pontoon up there overnight so that, because the storm was coming in? Well, those people didn't want to do it. They didn't want to do it. And she told me I should probably get off my own dock. And that was it for me. So that, that crap happens. And there's nothing the police can do about it.
So we made an ordinance.
You want to know what they told me? What they told me to do? Because I said, can I just go untie it and walk it down and beach it in the sand on the beach down there? And they said, no, you probably don't want to do that because you might get in trouble.
They could, they could.
Right. So if we did an ordinance, it would still be the police going out there and saying, hey, put out your fire, hey, quiet down, hey, you're parking on private property, hey, your boat's going to hit someone else's dock. I mean, it would still be the police.
But there's no laws, there's no ordinance that says you can only have three families in a house at a time. There's, they, there's nothing to enforce. There's nothing to enforce.
Okay, so how would we, if, if we had an ordinance? I'm just asking questions. I'm just, because on the township board, this is coming to us too. And, and you know, we have to have open dialogue on this and, and I'm not trying to be combative or anything.
No, I totally get it. So this is what, what Nemco suggested was what they did over in Preskill Township. They got the short-term rental owners and the people who were complaining wanting help in a room and they came up with an agreement. They came up with an ordinance that everybody was happy with.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to say, you're never going to have.
Do you have a copy of, of that ordinance so like we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
No, yeah, so they do that. So Nemco, that was our suggestion is if we're going to go that route, to have Nemco facilitate it because they are writing ordinances all over the state. Yeah.
Okay. So we're, we're starting, we're, we're starting to get close to when, when we need to be out of here. So it's, it's obviously, it's nothing, again, that we can solve here at this point, but it's something that.
It's a good discussion to have.
It's something that is, it's an issue. It came up on our survey for the master plan. It's an issue that is addressed. So that's why we were just, you know, wanted to bring it up. But it's obviously not something that's going to be solved here today.
Yeah, it's going to be something very.
So moving forward, we could maybe work on a proposed ordinance.
Not, not at all. It's going to be the board that's going to have to tell us. We could say, the.
We think, we think we need to be held to discuss it.
We think that we need to have something done to the board and suggest it to the board and they will say yes or no.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Is there anything else before we move on to public comments?
No.
Okay. Any public comments?
I don't want.
Okay.
Do you want to go to the podium?
Sure. I'll take the official stance. Hey, I'm Deb Kozlosky. I live here in Indian River. I've been up and coming here all my entire life, which is 64 years. My, I, I own two properties along the Sturgeon on Barbara Street. I own a fourth generation cottage on Barbara, 6767 Barbara, and I own the log home beside it at 6797 Barbara. My concern is when my grandfather had the cottage first and I loved it, came here all my life in the summer. And then my parents were able to buy it from Grandma and Grandpa and we continued to love it and so forth. My children actually thought they were Michiganders, although we were living in Virginia at the time. Their best time of their lives were spent up here on the river swimming and so forth. I want to keep this cottage in my, in my family. Hopefully someday my grandchildren will come and occupy it and so forth and take ownership and so forth, maybe even become Indian Riverites. But in the meantime, I have a daughter in Nevada and one that was in Atlanta, now back in Richmond, Virginia. And so they come to visit Grandma and Grandpa. I want to keep that cottage in my family. Okay? It means the world to me. The first year Joe and I came back and resided in Indian River, we lived in it and then we moved over into the house and the house, and the cottage sat there vacant. Joe's like, this is crazy. It's sitting there with nobody in it and so forth. I do not want to sell it, nor do I want, I do, I do not believe it would be an option for someone of low income to purchase it. And as far as giving back to society, and I heard latest comments on different things about how we need to give back to our schools. Honey, I volunteer in the schools. I taught school for 39 years and I give up my services all the time. As far as low-income rentals, my husband's built three houses in Sheboygan County to help low current, low, low-income people. So don't think that I'm not one that gives back. So as a, as a result, idea, we decided to go ahead and use it as short-term rental. My neighbors say the house has ever looked better. The gardens are excellent. Thank you very much, Lisa. The people that I have in there are all wonderful people. I do limit the number of people that can be in that cottage because I want them to have the same experience that I had growing up and jumping in that freezing cold river. I, I want that for everybody. I do live next door. I'm not on them all the time. I usually go over and introduce myself and so forth. Murphy usually goes over our burma noodle and gives them a lick. But other than that, they're on their own. But they've all been very respectful. My neighbors were concerned about it on the other side. They ended up putting up a partial privacy fence. I love them dearly. It did cause a little rift in the family, but you know, they did what they thought they needed to do to increase their privacy. Okay? Unfortunately, our patios line up and she's a very private person and didn't like the idea of seeing different people at the house during different times. I respect that. We can still have view of the river. In fact, after our last meeting, her husband came over and said, Deb, we love the way you do your cottage. Okay? I pay the full taxes on that place because the house is considered our primary, which by the way, is worth a heck of a lot more than the cottage. And you know, do everything else that I can do in this community to make it the best place to be because I think it is. I, I just don't know what people want. You know, what is the end game? You know, I just want to keep a piece of property in my family. You know? I do not want, you know, a lot of emotion going into it, as I get emotional now. If, if you've got a problem with the way I run my, my little cottage, then call me. Hey, Deb, the people were acting out. Hey, Deb, the fire light was on too, or fireplace was on too long or you left the lights on or, or whatever. You know, let me know. Let's, you know, but, or call the cops because I would do the same thing. You know, you got to have communication. There's a lot of this jibber jabber that's going on is just because we don't know our neighbors. You know what? Come over and say, hey, what's going on? I'm human too. Heck, I didn't like the guy down the street whose, whose grandson was running around on a little mini bike all last weekend, but did I have a hissy fit about it? Hell no. You know? Give me a break. What exactly is wrong? What is going on? You've got families that want to keep a piece of property in their, in their life. What is exactly wrong? If you've got craziness going on, address the craziness, but don't attack the people. That's what I, that's my whole deal. I taught school for 38 years. Okay? I have dealt with all levels of society. This is nuts. You've got to talk to one another. If my BRBO is bothering you or my, my guests are bothering you, then they should be addressed. Come to me first if you can. I'll give them whatever. They're out of there. This is my cottage. They're only standing here. If however, I'm not around, please call the cops. Because if they're doing something you don't like, I probably don't like it either because I got pretty high standards. But I don't understand. Regulate, 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 regulate. What the heck? What do you hope to gain from it? You want more taxes from me? Sure, I'll open other vein. You know, what, what do you really want from me? Sorry. That's me. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I graduated from school in this town. I am a resident.
Thanks, Deb.
Any other public comments? Okay. Board comments? Tom?
Nope.
Lisa?
Have you had a comment?
I don't at this time.
I'd just like to say thank you very much. It's been a very good educational meeting. I think it was held respectfully so that we could have dialogue going back and forth and kind of fill in some gaps and some things. And I appreciate it and I hope.
Thank you. Very good. I appreciated getting all the materials, although I did not have enough time to read them all. So, and Deb, I want to, I want to appreciate that you spoke today because I think that that's an important aspect to keep in mind. We don't have to list, like behavior.
I'm appreciating. And I, I'm sitting here, I love the way that you all talk to each other. I was very, very impressed with the communication that went back and forth and the understanding of each other's points of view and how to finagle things so that they fit along with the regulations. It was great. And I'm sorry I get so emotional.
That's a sense of passion.
We all do. I invite you anytime to come down and see my little cottage on the Sturgeon. I, every day I walk in there and I think, Mom and Dad would love it here.
Yeah. And that's understandable, Deb.
Okay. Um, I have a, I have a comment. And I'm, I'm going to address what Janet asked about earlier about the, the forms. I'm going to read it so I don't forget anything. On June 29th, 2023, at the regular meeting, the Tuscart Township Board passed the General Appropriations Act Resolution. New this year was the addition of section 10A and 10B that requires as a condition of funding that I sign an annual acknowledgement form that I have received, read and understand an annual acknowledgement form that I have received, read, and understand the township's board and administrative policies manual, including the Code of Ethics listed in chapter three, and that I agree to comply with all the policies and procedures, including any future changes the board may pass. Well, I have received, now, double-sided the policy manual. I have read it more than once, and I understand it. Uh, and after discussions with my attorney, I cannot sign a form that requires me to give up my constitutional protections. I cannot sign a form that contains entire sections that are subjective and legally questionable. I cannot sign this form because I have been accused multiple times in public and in written documents of violating sections of this manual by posting negative comments and attacking public officials on Facebook. I've asked several times for an example, and not once was one produced, because there is none. In fact, the township attorney was asked for an opinion on my alleged violations, and he confirmed there were none. Despite that, the allegations and accusations continue against me and others. That is what precipitated the now infamous meeting on May 11th, when my husband Pat attempted to defend me and asked for an apology. Everyone here knows how that ended up, right? He has been charged, arraigned, and is waiting trial because these board members want him in jail for disturbing their peace. What is interesting and may not be known, these board members have violated their own policy and ethics code by lying and embellishing in taped and sworn statements to the police in order to ensure that the prosecutor would bring charges. Tusker Township 3.0 Code of Ethics 3.1A 3 reads, "Honesty. Public officials should be scrupulously honest, avoiding any form of lying, deception, deviousness, hypocrisy, and cheating in their professional and personal lives." I do have examples, unlike the fact that I was not given any. On May 11th, 2023, in a statement to a Tusker Township police officer, trustee Janet Vance said, quote, "Now I don't know this for God's honest truth, so I'm just going to give you a heads-up of what the rumors are." But he is very paranoid, especially when it comes to Bob. And someone said, but he smokes a lot of pot, and that would explain the paranoia. Yep, he comes in there and reeks of it. But I don't know that I am just giving you a heads-up.
What does this have to do with my opinion?
Excuse me, I am doing my comments. For the record, Pat does not smoke anything or drink alcohol, and the only drugs he takes are for his heart condition, no doubt aggravated by stress. On May 11th, 2023, in a statement to a Tusker Township police officer, trustee Kramer, now interim-appointed supervisor, said, "If I wasn't in the position that I was, if that would've been on the street, I'd have just punched him right there because I was in such fear. I'd have taken preemptive action." Yeah, boom, just like Compton, and he made a punching motion into the air. So I ask you, who should be in fear now? Kramer has threatened Pat with preemptive action, and we know that both he and trustee Vance have CPLs. In fact, trustee Vance stated she was watching for weapons to appear. For the record, Pat never threatened anyone, and there are no guns, period, in the McGinnis household. And finally, and I suspect this is the real reason for their desire to press charges, because they said the quiet part out loud. On May 11th, 2023, in a sworn written statement to Tusker Township Police, clerk Rizma said, "At a minimum, he needs to have a restraining order that forces him to be excluded from public meetings and limits his engagement with any board member by establishing distant limits. We don't care if we have a video recording or not. He should not be in that meeting ever again." For the record, since May 11th, Pat has attended and recorded over a dozen meetings, including this one today, and comments at public comments. He still does that, which is his right and the right of everyone. So the end game here is to intimidate others who may want to express their opinion at public meetings and to prevent a public forum from benefiting the township uploaded to videos and Indian River flows. So, for that reason, I am not signing the form. Any other board comments?
Well, so aside from everything that you've just said, when I got the form and the packet and I ran through.
This is a conflict of interest one, right? Are we talking about the rest of the interests?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure I'm.
So, so when you read the conflict of interest of the acknowledgement form, it does say, "I agree to comply with all the policies and procedures applicable to my position." And then it steps down and says, "And the information in these policies are subject to change. Any policy changes duly passed by resolution of the township board will be communicated to me by official notices of adoption of resolutions." I, frankly, I have a big problem with this. I also have gotten letters, email, the last one was in May, I don't even know what the date was. Um, Bob sent me an email and said, uh, over my comments about the steps down to the river, which were factual comments. He sent me an email, said I needed to read the, of the ethics policy, um, and that he wasn't picking just on me, that anybody was going to be, um, this was gonna be applied to anybody that makes any public comments. And then he pulled it back, and I suspect, um, he tried to recall it, and I suspect it because he copied the attorney. That, to me, is a threat, um, when you do things like that. I have a problem with, um, with the, um, Code of Ethics in that the section that, that references, um, there's a section, it's A through, um, oh, it's A and B, and then 1 through 4, those are all subjective. That is, that is somebody's opinion. And I'm not, I, I learned a long time ago that once you sign, and this was from an oristle lawyer, um, once you sign your rights away, even if they're non-wavable rights, you still have to get an attorney if somebody violates them, and fight that first before you can fight the, the actual violation. So I send all of this stuff to the Attorney General's office, because I don't think it's legal. I also talk to an attorney. I don't think it's legal. I think it's, and that's what the attorney told me, is it's vague, potentially unconstitutional, and, um, so I sent that out to the AG. And I'm not gonna sign until somebody can confirm that I'm not waiving rights, that I, that I can be held accountable for somebody's opinion of, you know, whether or not, um, I mean, one is, um, avoiding appearances of impropriety. Public servants should avoid conduct which tends to undermine public trust by creating in the minds of a reasonable, impartial observers the perception that the government office was being used improperly. So I'm being told that if I see it, I can't say it, and that's wrong. We asked, when this was being, some of this was being drafted, we specifically asked to have a meeting of the whole come in, review these policies before they were implemented. That was one of the things that Jim Burke asked for, to have, so that we could sit down and go through this and identify areas where we, that we didn't agree with. We didn't get that opportunity. Nobody did. I don't think that was right. This shouldn't have been done this way. So I'm not gonna sign it either until I hear back from the AG's office on whether or not it's even constitutional, because that's what I'm being told, is that it's likely not constitutional. To tie budget, that's not how townships operate. You don't tie a budget to signing rights away, and that's what this is doing. So they're saying that if we don't sign this, we don't get our budget. Well, who does that hurt? It doesn't hurt any of us. We don't get paid anyways. We're all voluntary. But you're not gonna be able to go take training unless you get, unless, because we put training dollars in our budget. So there's no, if they don't give us our budget, and I don't even know if that's legal. Uh, 'cause once you approve a budget, it's, you're supposed to abide by it. They can change it. They can change it tomorrow, you know, we learned that a long time ago, so that's, that's where I'm.
I've already signed it. Maybe I didn't read everything into it. I've had to sign so many of those confidentiality agreements and, and, and conflict that I, I did read through it. I, I personally don't take all that wording as saying that I can't do that. They'd have a hell of a play on their hands if they came after me for something that I haven't done. But ethics agreements are always subjective. They're not black and white is the issue.
You're, and you're right about that, 'cause I did sign them too. I was informed.
Yeah, they're always subjective is the tough part about.
But they also don't violate rights.
No.
This was, this is not typical. In fact, the Attorney General's office, when I sent it to them, they said, we've never seen anything like this before. So, yeah, so, um, and it was.
I may not have read any of these deeply into it, but I signed it.
Well, it's part of my training, so.
I signed it.
Yeah.
I've read many of them, and, and, but I, I agree, they're always sort of subjective. Ethics in its own right is subjective is the tough part.
Yeah, but some of it, some of it is pretty common. The issue happens when they decide that one person or the board is gonna make a decision on what is considered, you know, what is considered appropriate behavior.
Just like a small protest matters when we're at meetings.
Yeah.
Can I, can I withdraw? Can I withdraw my no comment?
Pardon?
Can I withdraw my no comment?
Yes, so do you have a comment?
I do, because since you brought up this subject, and I'm done here. Basically, this month, since you won't have a meeting until October.
Right.
I was not going to sign the document as well, primarily for the issue of the fact that if they add something new, I would agree with what I had previously said, and then they add something different than what we had signed, and that in itself is unconstitutional.
Yeah, they should have to come back to you and get you a reset.
But it doesn't say.
With any substantial changes, you should come back. Absolutely.
And that's not what it says.
If they would give me an ethics, you know, an ethics, a conflict of interest statement, an ethical statement like I used to sign for General Motors, I'm all for that. I don't have a problem with those, that language. This goes way too, this goes way too far.
I understand your shit.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?